I all.
I think we're all here.
That's everybody.
Yes, I think so too. Thank you very much, Kim. Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see you all. Hope everybody was able to get out for at least some time during the snow today to enjoy it. It's Thursday, December 17th, and we're zooming in from home. And I would like to make a motion to return to public session if I could have a second, please. Thank you, Bill. Seconded by Bill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Would everybody please join us as is our custom and please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to hearing about budget conditions this evening, hearing about conditions that are going to affect our ability to plan for the next school year. Looking forward to some survey results and not sure what to make of the fact that we've had our first snowstorm before. It's officially winter. So a lot of planning on the agenda for tonight and I'll just pause first in case there are any board announcements. And if not, then Andrew, we would love to turn it over to you, please.
Sure. Thank you, Marjorie. And I'll begin in a way that until about an hour ago, I didn't expect to be beginning tonight. I was looking forward to thanking all of our crews who worked very hard through the day to get schools ready for tomorrow. And I was looking forward to welcoming our students back tomorrow. Unfortunately, as the community now knows, we will be closed again tomorrow. Never, never the decision that one wants to make. But in this case, given it seemed, it seems most likely that we would have a delay in the morning, if not a full closing. And given the fact that, and this is important to remind of the community, even though it feels like a loss tomorrow, we're not losing the day, we're moving the day to April. So we still have the same number of days of school. And we would rather be able to know that it'll be an in-person day for students in April rather than going to a remote day tomorrow. And we can't do both. I think that's an important piece for the community to know also it's one or the other. So this way we guarantee that full day in April. And it doesn't mean that in the future, we may not use remote learning. If we have weather issues that push us in that direction, that's still an option for the future. Just, this is the way we're going right now. I do still want to thank people who worked very hard at schools today to do all they could to prepare for tomorrow and including our transportation folks who are out on the roads in order to be able to give us the reports that they gave us this evening that helped us to make those decisions. Moving on though, from that decision, I want to thank everybody who responded to the COVID testing consent form. We've had responses, I think, from a little bit more than 1,800 students, families of students in the district. So we really appreciate that. I do want to actually make very clear. We're not required to test at this time. We're not testing at this time. We're not in one of the zones. We're simply preparing in the event that we do become declared to be either a yellow, orange, or red zone. So again, we appreciate all the support and the responses. We do still hope to hear from the other 1,200 or so that we haven't heard from yet. We will. So you'll all still continue to see some reminders as we try to prompt the rest of the responses, just to give a little bit more detail on the scenarios. Again, if we're in a, if we do become a yellow zone, then we have to at least one time test at least 20% of the in-person population to determine the percentage that would be positive. If we're below the percentage positivity rate in the surrounding community, then one day of testing may all we need to do be all we need to do in the yellow zone. That's not the case in an orange or a red zone where in an orange zone, it's also 20%, but the testing is ongoing on a weekly basis. And if it's a red zone, it's 30% over the course of a month, but has to be weekly and ongoing basis. So that's also just to let people know that those are very different scenarios and they may call for a different response. If we only have to test once and we can feel confident that we would be below the threshold, then we wouldn't want to do anything so disruptive to the way we're currently doing things. But if we know that we're going to have to be testing on a weekly basis, we may have to make more significant change in order to do that testing in the least disruptive way possible, which will always be our goal. We still committed to testing in such a way that we have the least additional amount of quarantining as a result of that. Because as we've said so many times, quarantining alone could cause us to shut down schools if it requires quarantining staff and students. So if and when the testing begins, we'll do it in such a way that it minimizes the impact on quarantining. And that it's possible to do that and still very legitimately entirely legitimately do the testing. I've had some questions about that, you know, does just trying to avoid quarantining mean that you're sort of gaming the system and trying to get around the right way of doing it? We've got medical guidance on that to assure us that it's perfectly appropriate to test in such a way that you minimize quarantining and you're still doing legitimate testing of students and staff. And it's also, we've also since we shared more detail with the community, we've had a number of parents reach out and express concern that if we were to test on a Wednesday, for example, it could have more impact on students and the staff who teach them in cohort A rather than a cohort B. We want everyone to know that we're very mindful of that. And however we do it, we'll make sure that we're having equitable impact. And again, the goal will be to have as little impact, hopefully no impact on both cohorts. So thank you for helping us think about that and we will be very mindful of that. Just a practical reminder, next week we're fully remote for students through the holiday, remote learning on Monday, Tuesday, asynchronous learning on Wednesday. Thank you to the community for understanding that decision. It really was made with health in mind and not wanting to be calling families and staff once the holidays have begun and increased likelihood of people gathering with others and only after the fact finding out that they now need to quarantine. So that was the thinking on that decision and we appreciate the cooperation and the support we've had as we move in that direction. We've had some questions about what might happen in January after the break. Other districts have had similar conversations. We fully intend to open on January 4th. We hope, we certainly hope we're able to do that. We plan to do that. The advice that we've gotten on the thinking around why not delay if people are going to be traveling and if they may have gathered with other people over the break. The thinking there generally is that the more you extend the vacation period, just the more the extend the possibility for that kind of traveling and gathering to happen. So if we were to announce now that students wouldn't be coming back until January 11th, instead of the 4th, then we think we'd face perhaps similar issues on the 11th as we might face on the 4th. So again, we want to encourage everybody to follow the guidance. Continue to wear masks, social distance, wash your hands, please, please. We know it's going to be that much more tempting over the holidays to, to get a little bit more lax perhaps, but the more we can all continue to do all the good things that have kept us relatively safe and kept us open really a vast majority of the time. Let's all please keep doing that and then we'll be back on January 4th and we look forward to that. We do continue to make adjustments and keep thinking about ways we can bring more students back as recently as the end of last week. Catherine McNulty, our Director of Special Services, reached out to another 63 students to invite more students to come back four days per week. Not all of those students took us up on the invitation, but a good number did and we're really glad to be able to make that offer. And we will continue doing that. In the recent COVID testing survey that we sent out, we did ask people to let us know their thoughts about attendance. And those responses that we've gotten may also help us to bring additional students back in January. So that will be our goal and we will keep working on that. With that, I just want to wish everybody very safe and healthy and happy holidays. Hopefully I'll have another chance to say that at the end of the meeting tonight. And then we're going to turn to share some of the feedback that we've gotten recently, but I don't know if we're ready to do that quite yet. Or, or do we have other matters to attend to first?
I think we are ready to, but we can pause in case anybody has a question or a thought related to the updates that you've already provided. Thank you for the deep dive and careful study of all things related to COVID testing and preparing for the possibility or the eventuality that we might be a zone and would be required to test a percentage of our students. We really appreciate that we're ready to move on that plan if we need to or should it become necessary. So thank you very, very much for all of that. Did anybody have a question about what we heard just now? If not, then I do think we're ready to go to the survey. Thank you very much.
Super. Thank you so much. So I'm sure our families and our students will remember that just a few weeks ago, we sent out surveys asking them about the experience so far this year. Asking them about the Wednesday, Wednesdays to get some input on those Wednesdays because we know we've gotten some input already. But really also just ask them about the experience and the, and the results. And we got terrific response rates from both students and families on those surveys. And we're very pleased about that. And, and these things just help us to think, think further about the experience we're providing and make adjustments as we say we keep trying to do. And Mary's going to speak to some of the slides in a minute that will show some of the results. And she's been having conversations with our instructional leaders, sharing with them the feedback that we've gotten. So we really do take the feedback to heart and try to make adjustments in light of that feedback we've been getting. So Mary, if you want to go ahead and put up the slides, I think you have them.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Make sure everything's. Okay. Sorry about that. Let me just go to slideshow here. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you.
Good evening.
So as you probably remember, and Andrew mentioned, we did two surveys, one of our fourth through 12th grade students and one for all of our families K-12. We did ask families to fill the survey out for each child, knowing that each child, especially children at different levels, might have a different experience. So we wanted to share some of those results with you this evening. Some of the questions were asked almost exactly in exactly the same way for students and family members. So you can see those compared here. And Andrew mentioned the return rate or the response rate, which we were really pleased with. I believe for families, it was a little over 40% and for students, just under 60%. So it was a really strong response rate. And so we were happy to see that. But we looked at the amount of assigned work and kind of perceptions around that. And the three choices were, I think the amount of assigned work is about right. I think the amount of sign work is too much or there isn't enough assigned work or I or my child could handle more. So it's interesting. And this came up in the challenge success survey data as well that, you know, our parents and our students are very much aligned in many ways. So you see that 69% versus 62% of students felt that it was about right. But you do see that split with the remaining respondents saying, you know, students tending to think it's too much and parents tending to think we can handle a little bit more. But it was helpful to get that big picture perception of the workload because I think right now what feels different in this COVID environment is what happens in school versus homework, right? Or a remote work or assigned work. And so they're all starting to blend together. So I think the overall amount of assigned work is what we were trying to get a sense of. Did that feel like something that our students could handle?
If I could just say one other thing, Mary, that, you know, one of the things that's been true throughout the pandemic, perhaps understandably is, is there are very strong feelings that individuals have about their own experiences. And one of the big reasons for doing the survey was to try to help us understand. We sometimes hear very, very passionate and strong feelings from sometimes a relatively small group or sometimes just one or two people. And it's helpful for us to try to check and gauge, you know, not in any way to delegitimize those feelings of that individual, but to see, you know, is this a universal experience? Or is this an experience that perhaps one or a small group or that some are having differently than others? And that's where these questions really help us a lot. And again, not at all to say we don't think about and respond to the individuals who reach out, but it just helps us also put some context around any changes that we might make. Thanks, Mary.
Sure, absolutely. This was a question we asked students to rate their learning. So on a scale of one to four with a one being, I don't feel I learned much and a four being, I feel I learned a lot. So you can see that most of our students are in this three or four range, which is good. Even average rating across grades four through 12 of 2.84. So again, it's something that we look at very closely and seriously, although we're happy to see that most students feel pretty strongly about their learning right now. We do have a significant number of students who aren't quite as sure. So we take that into consideration as well. And as Andrew mentioned, we just shared in the past week, we had curriculum council meetings with our instructional leaders at all levels. So all of this data was shared with them as well. I think it's really important as we reflect on our practices and think about what's working and what may not be working as well and for which students is the experience more difficult or perhaps even working better? So that's part of the conversation. This question was interesting. It's how sure are you? Oh, I'm sorry. Having trouble clicking in the wrong spots. How sure are you that you can do well in school right now? So this is, you know, just thinking about feeling confident that I can do well in this environment. And so again, nice to see that a large number of our students were either extremely sure, quite sure, somewhat sure, but about 10% of our students not feeling sure at all. So that was an interesting piece for us. We want to make sure that all our students feel that they can be productive and do well in this kind of environment. And then are you getting all the help you need in school right now? So a large number, 71% saying yes. But 27% saying, no, I need a little more and 2% seeing I need a lot of extra help as well. So we know that that's something that we have to pay careful attention to. And then we asked about the Wednesday structure. And again, this was a question that we asked of parents and students in very similar ways. So the three choices were, I don't have a strong opinion or I would like more structure or it's helpful to have the flexibility with time. So for students, you can see the flexibility was very much appreciated at all levels. But it seems that at the high school level, it was most appreciated by our students with 85% of our students saying that it's really helpful to have the flexibility with time. But this was just a, you know, a forced choice of these three descriptors. So we also asked an open-ended question of our students and we did the same for parents. If you could make a change to Wednesdays, what would it be? What kind of structure or schedule would be most helpful to you? And then, you know, we've listed some of the common themes here. As you might imagine, with so many students, there were a large variety of different kind of themes that emerged, but these were some of the most common. Many saying they don't want to see a change, but many wanting to have a time to check in with teachers, either just to be sure that they understand what to do for the day or to get help when it's needed. Many, many students mentioned needing a break from Zoom classes. You know, comments were things like, anything but more Zoom, please don't make me sit through another Zoom class. So there was this feeling that we do that a lot and we need a break from it. Students would prefer to be in school and I think this is a universal for parents, for students, for our teachers, for all of us. We are very much looking forward to the day when we can be in school and do this in the ways where that we're most used to. But so many students did mention that. They also mentioned the amount of assigned work on Wednesdays specifically. They would like to see less work that's specific to Wednesdays and more of a chance to catch up with work already assigned or go more deeply, or if they're perhaps confused on an assignment that's longer term to have some time to do that. Students would like the most flexibility in terms of when things are posted. So early morning and do it midnight or the next day to provide the most flexibility with their time. And then quite a few mentioned needing time to sleep in. And I just thought that was interesting because we spoke about that when we last met with the challenge success survey and that data as well, noting that, you know, many students, especially adolescent students, don't get enough sleep. And that having the chance to sleep in a little bit was really helpful to them as we think about stress and mental health. We also asked our students the structures they find helpful and would like to see more of. So again, the being in school with teachers for live lessons definitely at the top, but also live lessons on Zoom or pre-recorded lessons that students can watch several times. So if you were unsure after you watched it the first time, you could go back, you could watch it slowly, things like that were mentioned. Independent work that's done on Wednesdays with flexible times. And then meetings or small group check-ins with classmates and teachers, both in person and on Zoom. These were some of the top things that students found most helpful according to this survey. And here's that Wednesday question for our families as well. The same three options for responses. It was really interesting to see that at elementary and at middle school is there was almost a dead heat here between 45 and 46% being split on wanting more structure or having more flexibility. And at middle school, it was 48 and 46%. But at the high school, that's where you saw most families really want a larger difference in the number of families who thought that flexibility would be really helpful as well. And so again, we asked that open-ended question and looked for some common and, you know, this was interesting too, because there was more disparity in the opinions. Some of the themes were common, but also conflicting. So again, you know, wanting more time in school, which seems like a universal, more teacher availability for live teaching or check-ins, extra help. Many people would like to see a full or half-day Zoom schedule. But then again, giving students some off-screen time and flexible time was something that was mentioned quite a bit. Many wanted to keep the asynchronous structure, but also that opportunity for students to get more sleep was mentioned once again. So just some things to keep in mind. And these are things that, you know, we're thinking about as we think about how we might restructure our Wednesdays. And lastly, we asked our families how concerned they are about their child's social, emotional wellbeing right now. And, you know, those last two, the bottom categories, they are not at all concerned or slightly concerned or approximately 50%. But it, that means that the other 50% are somewhere between somewhat concerned and extremely concerned. So this is something that I think our families are thinking about a lot. The amount of stress, the amount of isolation, the amount of screen time, there are so many concerns that our families have. And of course we share those concerns. So it was helpful to have this survey data as we start to think about changes we might make or how we move forward into this next semester of school. Well, I'll stop there for any comments or questions.
Thank you. We really appreciate you taking the time, not only to compile the survey responses, but for having administered the survey in the first place. It really is so important to try as best we can to hear from as many families and students as possible about the experiences that they're having with hybrid learning or remote learning. So we really appreciate the questions that you've asked and that we had such a high response rate. I think that's really great. I'm sure we'll continue to engage our community in similar conversations throughout the course of the year. But it's very helpful here at the close of 2020 to just have a snapshot of how our respondents were experiencing school, some of the concerns, and then also some of the areas where it seems like for the most part, families and students felt. It's hard to generalize, but satisfied at least in certain respects. So thank you very, very much. I'll pause here for questions and comments. Somebody would like to start, please. Yes, Bill, go ahead.
I echo that, that the, the act of surveying shows a willingness to be told things you might not want to hear and/or to be open to new information. So I think that's very useful. I think another thing you can sort of see from this is that it is important to ask because, you know, you, we tend to hear from a segment of the population. And it's important to sort of check in and see what is a widespread opinion versus what's not. And the return rates actually, you know, considering lots of other things that families are dealing with, the return rates are actually very, very good. I was very interested to see that for, you know, the Wednesday, you know, we get, we get a lot of questions about Wednesdays and it seemed like at the student level, they were sort of either okay or no strong opinion about it. And at the family level is about 50/50. So I think that was probably unexpected. The other thing that I saw that was, I wanted to ask about is all along, at least I've been more worried about the elementary students in terms of how they're going to adapt to this and learn remotely. Yet on one of the slides, it looked like the elementary students, more than the older students were saying, I'm learning a lot. Now, maybe it's their judgment on what they're learning is, is more tempered, but I found that almost counter to what our expectations were. I wonder how it struck you.
Yeah. Well, we only surveyed fourth and fifth grade students. And I'd say if I had to make a, a general statement, they tend to be very positive. I think they're happy to be asked. So I don't know if that skews the data in any way. Certainly nice to see, but you keep those things in mind as well as you look at that. I think the students that, and we've said this before, and I know it's echoed by many of our families as well, the students we worry most about in remote learning, our youngest students and our students who struggle, students who have disabilities, our English language learners, those students.
Yeah. Absolutely. So I, you know, I, I think it's commendable that you do this. I think the data are very interesting and you know, like usually when you ask about things like this, you're going to get a bell, a bell curve of opinions. But it's good to see that. It's good to see that there's a bell curve. Very good. Commendable.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I just want to clarify a little bit. I think, I want to make sure I'm correct, Mary, in that while we only invited fourth and fifth grade students to respond, families of students of any age could respond.
That's correct. Yes.
We do see responses from more families. And then in terms of our worries, I would just add a little bit to say that they're different worries, I think, for students at different ages. So while it might be more content learning and instructional kind of worry for how yet the youngest students can handle the more remote environment. I think some of the social emotional worries are just as significant for the older students as they are for the younger ones.
Yeah.
So we don't, we, we work very hard not to lose sight of that. We talk with the counselors about that. And you correctly pointed out, we have heard, and not that we've heard a ton about the Wednesdays, but we've heard more about Wednesdays than probably any other single issue. So it was surprising to see how split the responses were once we, once we heard from a very large group. And then I think the challenge that that presents is you have a large number of people saying, please don't do anything, leave it just the way it is. But you also have quite a large number of people saying, please do something differently. So how do you, how you please those groups? But I think, you know, Mary has, as we said before, been working very closely with our instructional leaders. And I think, I think families and students will be seeing some changes when we come back in January. The challenge is going to be, you know, making changes that are not too dramatic, that they further upset those who are not looking for any change, but also substantial enough that they provide some satisfaction for those who are looking for a change. So a lot of thought is being given to that right now.
Great.
Andrew, this may be too specific of a question, and if it is, I apologize, but are there any kind of regulations that would limit us from like allowing self, so let's self-selection in terms of how people participate on Wednesdays without them being maybe marked absent or present, like it, do you understand what I'm saying? Like if we offered some opportunity for in-person or structured remote learning synchronous in some way. I think those families would be required to participate in that. Regardless of whether they prefer that or not, right? Or else they would have to be absent. Again, this may be too specific.
It is specific and it is. The whole question of attendance at the moment is a complicated question and the, and the guidance from the state is not a hundred percent clear to us on exactly what's going to count. And what isn't? Generally speaking, the state has moved to a more generous place than they used to be, and they've had to, they've had to sort of count the remote environment. Otherwise, they know no schools are going to be meeting their, their required number of hours and days. And they, and they are very concerned that we provide equitable opportunity to all. So I don't, I don't have a specific answer to your precise question.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I figured not, but I think that's part of the challenge in coming up with a plan, I would think. Yeah.
Yes, Rory.
Thanks. As Bill said, I really commend the administration's willingness to participate in this survey, and I do think the data are very interesting and certainly opened my eyes. I was probably influenced by the voices that we do hear quite regularly, and it's, it's very reassuring to feel like we're actually not that far off from the community's thinking in general. Having said that, I noticed a couple of things, Mary, as you went through the slides that just sort of caught my eye. I found that it was interesting. I, as you know, I've sort of questioned Wednesdays a little bit, and I'm learning every week, I think, about why we're doing what we do on Wednesdays. Although I've been a supporter of more structure on Wednesdays. But some students seem to indicate that they would like to have more time just to check in with the teacher to make sure it was clear about their assignments. And then I noticed on one of the slides that about twenty-seven percent of kids said that they would like a little more help, and that's not specific to Wednesdays, but just in general. And then the last slide that you shared seemed to indicate that only twenty percent felt that they were not concerned about social emotional wellness, meaning that eighty percent are concerned at some level on the spectrum. And so I guess my overarching question is what are we doing with the results of the survey? So it's great that we've taken the survey, we've analyzed the results, we've presented the results, but what are the actions that will come from this? Are there actions? Should we expect to see changes in January that align to some of the themes that we're seeing here in the survey? Just wonder what, what the next steps might be.
Yeah. And just in reference to, you know, that last slide was parents' perceptions and the others that you mentioned were students, so that might be part of it. But definitely that's been the conversation with our instructional leaders is so, no, now what? Now we have this information, what do we do? So the first thing is, you know, how do we structure Wednesdays? So we've started drafting some ideas about that. Both to, you know, provide some choices to make sure, so things that we heard from the Challenge Success data as well as this survey data. It's that connection piece that we know was strong pre-COVID that we want to maintain during this time as well. Also having that time to check in, whether it be just to have that structure. You know, we certainly had students saying, and some parents saying, you know, my child just needs to have a reason to wake up and check in in the morning and be somewhere and then, you know, kind of get going, okay? So I think that's important to remember too, but also having that opportunity to say, am I on the right track here? I think I know what I'm supposed to do. Am I on the right track? Get some feedback. For our younger students, like making sure they know the schedule for the day. You might be seeing, you know, your music teacher at a different time in the day, or something else might be happening. So all of those things. I think what's also clear is really helpful to get the big picture of, you know, where the families are, where students are. But there's no one way to do things that's going to serve everyone well. So as much as we can build in choice and kind of keeping our values of social emotional well-being, connections, relationship, mental health, as well as those opportunities for more individual and small group work. In terms of the academics, I think that's a place where students and families appreciate that time being spent. So not necessarily another class, but time to go more deeply with the classes you have. Time to check in, get some more feedback, those kinds of things.
Now, on that topic, I know a lot of, sorry for the follow-up question, but a lot of teachers do offer extra help on Wednesdays. Do we have any sense of the participation rates in those extra help sessions?
So there's after-school extra help, which is offered, that's, you know, part of a contractual piece. And then, you know, some teachers are meeting with students on Wednesdays, just kind of informally checking in and you, so we don't have exact participation rates, no. That's certainly something that would be interesting, yeah, to see, because we had, that's, extra help is something we've had all along. And then we have, now it's actually a little, it feels more limited to some students because it's only happening on Wednesdays. And that's because we didn't want to schedule it right after school where some students might be in transit and other students are at home and they could access it differently. So it provides more for that type of work, but we don't have a participation rate right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Sure.
I can just ask a clarifying question about the slide where students were asked to evaluate on a scale of one to four the quality of their experience of learning. So because that was a student response, the elementary response represents the responses of the fourth and fifth graders who completed the survey. And then this was middle school students and high school students. So I appreciate your characterization of the elementary school students as maybe being very positive and just happy to be asked, and maybe we could apply a similar conjecture to our high school students and say, you know, they're approaching this survey with a different mindset, perhaps, and, you know, more willing to be very honest or to approach the survey in a different manner. But similarly, if you could just share the administration's thinking on, you know, what happens next, it's, it's it's very helpful to see that fifty percent of our high school students, you know, are feeling very good about their learning, but it, you know, it's a concern that more of them are feeling less than good than are feeling very, very good. You know, what are some of the steps that we would take to try to better understand what's causing high school students to experience their learning in that manner? You know, I'm not sure if you've gotten that far.
Yeah, we have shared this with our administrative team as well as our instructional leaders. So it's certainly, it's, which only happened this week, so it is relatively new. But I don't think that some of the things, some of the things you saw on those slides were really just confirming some worries that we've had. So, you know, students who, for example, don't necessarily show up to classes, students who maybe don't turn their cameras on and don't participate. I know our social workers have been doing more outreach for students of concern. I know each school has a meeting each week to talk about students of concern and think about the different ways they can reach out. I know our teachers are thinking about it. It is a worry. But it's, you know, new information, so we don't have necessarily a whole set of new steps that we're taking. But I think it's, it's been an ongoing worry, so people are certainly trying, and I think this is, you know, we're trying to figure out how to come together in more productive ways and make sure we're reaching all of the students we need to reach.
Thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate that.
Marjorie, I think it's interesting to think about that if we weren't in the environment that we're in with COVID. I imagine you'd probably get, if we did a, I mean, it might be interesting to do this survey every year, right? I mean, wouldn't it be interesting to know during a normal year in December with kids attending every day, how do they feel? And I would guess that we might have some similar, even in an in-person environment, there's going to be students who are going to feel less confident, need more help, et cetera. I mean, I think, I think it would be very interesting actually to do this survey. I am very hopeful we'll be in person next year at this time. But I think regardless, I think it would be interesting to, to do that and compare. I just think it's helpful to really understand the students' experiences.
In a sense, I feel as if we just looked at that data at our last meeting when we looked at the Challenge Success results, because so many of the questions really did get at very similar perceptions of your experience of school. And that's why it was a little heartbreaking to look at the Challenge Success data, because of course, we captured that snapshot right before, you know, anybody could have anticipated a global pandemic, and that's why it would be so helpful, you know, to be able to administer the survey again right now, but in the absence of that opportunity, it's really great, again, to reiterate the positive here, that you did create this subset of questions and solicit this feedback. I had the very same thought about the last question at the end, how concerned are you about your child's social and emotional well-being? And that, you know, it would be so important to compare the responses that we have now during the pandemic to, you know, compared to what? We don't know, because we haven't been in the habit of asking these questions every year. But for the fact that we actually did just ask them last year during Challenge Success or similar questions. So it would be interesting to compare. And we're very, we're very lucky that we're in a position to take the time to reflect and to involve our community in reflection on how we're doing and how we're providing education and how it's being experienced, even as we develop it in this fluid environment. So again, thank you so much for your willingness to ask these questions and get this feedback. Were there any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Thank you so much. I think we're ready to transition. Thank you, Mary. Transition to our presentation of budget conditions, and then just for members of the community who are with us and perhaps waiting to participate in public forum, I'll just mention that after this presentation, we will have an opportunity for public forum, and we invite you to enter any questions or comments that you would like to share in the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Please just identify yourself. We are not able to read anonymous comments into the record. And if you would please tell us where you live and where your kids are in school, we appreciate that. And we'll turn our attention to public forum, as I said, just after this presentation. And with that, I think we're ready to turn it back to you, Andrew.
Marjorie.
Thank you.
So this, and Danell's going to put up some slides and I'll turn over to Danell in just a moment. This is, this is a presentation that we do right around this time every year. Very, very specifically at this time of year, because it's at this time of year when we know some more of the numbers that are going to impact the budget that we develop for the next school year. Always important to stress, this is not a presentation of the school budget. We are, we have certainly begun the process of developing next year's school budget behind the scenes, and we will begin to share the results of that work in February with our board, and we'll go very deliberately through every line of that budget in, starting in February. But tonight, we present the kind of global conditions that surround the development of the budget to help the board understand where we are. And to get some very specific feedback from the board by the end of the presentation tonight. So you're going to hear about the drivers that shape this school budget each year, but then Danell, can we just go back one more? Sorry. You're going to hear about conditions that influence. You're going to hear about things like the Consumer Price Index, you're going to hear about health insurance, you're going to hear about those factors outside of our control that, that shape what we're able to do and what we think we know about some revenue and some expenditure in the coming year. And then we're going to turn to the board and say, as a result of what you've heard tonight, is your guidance to us any different than it was at the beginning of the year when you set the board goal that you set for this year? So that's a little bit of what's explained on this slide here. So now we can move to now onto the next slide. These are the budget drivers every year that develop our school budget. We'll speak more to these in February. When we're developing the budget, we develop it around school program, of course, new programs, we're finding existing programs. We talk about professional learning. We talk about enrollment and class size. And we talk about infrastructural issues, and this year we have the added, obviously, infrastructure piece of COVID preparedness. But tonight, again, is really not about these kind of details. So this slide is here to say, this is what we're going to be talking to you about in February. Tonight is about the conditions around us. They're going to influence our development of the budget. So if we just move forward now to the next slide. Here's the board's goal that you developed at the beginning of this school year. And particularly, we pay attention tonight that that first bullet point says adopt a budget that is fiscally responsible and does not exceed the tax cap. Then we strive towards sustainable contracts and strengthened partnerships, and we manage the district's infrastructure and human resources in an equitable, responsible, safe and sustainable manner. We take the charge from the board very seriously. We work to live up to and live within the parameters that you said for, set for us here. And by the end of tonight, what we would really hope to hear is is this, is your thinking still in the same place as it was when you wrote this goal? Or has something in the world around us changed that causes you to think differently? Because after tonight, we're going to continue developing the budget that we'll present to you then in February. And we would certainly much rather get a head start in the right direction and know that we're going to be coming to you within a budget that is kind of in line with your thinking. And currently, it's this thinking that you see here on this slide that's guiding us. So I think at this point, I turn over to Danell, and she's going to take us through some of the specific conditions that are existing in the world around us, and then I'll come back a little bit more at the end. Thanks, Danell.
Thank you.
Oh, Danell, we're muted. There we go.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I heard somebody. Do you hear that?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay. So the composition of the school budget consists of two parts, our revenues and our expenditures. We anticipate our expenses, in the development process, we look at the our history of our revenues and expenses. I, I am currently hearing a student on my side. Hold on just a moment. Okay, it has stopped. So that is good. So first, I want to, want to speak to you about our revenue. Our primary source of revenue is property tax. Our primary, our budget revenue for property tax is close to eighty-eight percent of our total revenue. State aid makes up an additional seven point four five percent of our revenue. That's our second largest revenue source. Our fund balance and reserves take up two point eight seven percent of our reserves and our fund balance. These are set by the board in both in June and July, and we'll discuss that further. Finally, our last source of revenue is the other category. This includes interest earnings, sales tax, rental income, and other miscellaneous sources that make up one point eight one percent of our revenue. In the other revenue category, we look at interest rates. They have come down quite a bit since last year. At this point last year, we had, when we were receiving one point seven five percent in interest rates. And in December of two thousand eighteen, it was two point oh two percent. Currently, we're receiving point four one percent. As a school district, we do have limitations of where we can invest our money, and we also must maintain collateralization on all of our funds. The county did, does, we do receive some sales tax from the county. The county did raise their sales tax in August of two thousand nineteen to eight point three seven five percent. And in the first three quarters of this calendar year, we saw an increase in our sales tax collection related to that. But in October and November, we saw a significant decrease of one point five two percent in October and two point four nine percent in November compared to this time last year. Another revenue source is refund from BOCs. As you know, BOCs cannot show a profit, so any surplus that they have must be returned to the districts, and that is based on their participation. As I stated earlier, reserves and fund balance will be finalized in June and July by the board and our year-end balance sheets will help guide the board in that decision. And then finally, state aid is the other biggest portion besides property tax that is is our revenue stores. We do anticipate some change in the allocation that state aid will be sending to us.
Downward, Danell? The downward change in the state aid?
Yeah, so currently, we're seeing state aid is Yeah, so, so currently, we're seeing state aid is talking about holding back on certain payments. So we're not sure where we'll land for next year if those cutbacks will continue.
And it's too early to have any sense of by what percentage they may decrease?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, can I just ask a question? It's, it's fair to say, I think they've been talking about a significant percentage. Whether they actually follow through on what they say is still unknown at this point. Is that correct?
Yes. So there is, the governor presents a budget and then it goes to the legislation. So it's unclear where we stand at this point.
That's, thanks for the clarification. Thank you.
So our, our property tax is the majority of our funding source for schools. We do operate under a tax cap condition. The tax cap in its inception was misinterpreted by many as a 2% tax cap. The 2% cap is actually a factor in the overall tax cap calculation. The tax cap is calculated based on the Consumer Price Index, otherwise known as CPI. The, the CPI portion of the tax cap calculation is capped at 2%. So in 2021, the CPI was 1.81% and we use that in our calculation factor. But in 1920 and 1819, CPI was actually over 2%. So we cap, we were capped at 2% in our calculation. Another condition that bears weight in the tax cap calculation is our assessment growth factor, which in, for the, which for 2122, we'll use 1.0108. This is not an assessment increase, yet brick and mortar construction, which is used in the tax cap calculation and to account for new buildings. The state provides us with this figure based on 2019 tax rolls. And the significant increase that you see here is primarily due to development in the Bedford section of the school district. So I'd like to walk you through the tax cap calculation. So first, we start with our current tax year levy, which is 97,948,497. And then we add into that assessment growth that I was just speaking about, that brick and mortar growth that we see. So then we get this subtotal of 99,6,341. We are permitted to subtract out some exclusions in this calculation. Those are primary debt service and also building aid. But then later down in the bottom of the calculation, we'll add those future debt service payments and building aid back into the calculation. So when we add those, those exemptions, we get to a number of 97,38,594. CPI has not been released yet. It is currently trending at 1.17%. The, the actual true rate that we'll use with you in February will be released sometime next month. But this just gives us an overview picture. So now we have, once we multiply in the allowable growth factor based on CPI, we have 98,173,946. Last year, since we did not reach our tax cap, we maintained a flat levy from year to year. We are allowed to carry over a portion of that tax cap difference. And that's the 128,038. So we add that back in. And then I spoke about those exclusions or exemptions from above. Those were the debt service and building aid. So now we add those back in. So our estimated tax cap at most can go up to 100,291,020. So what does that mean for the total budget? Our property tax limit at most can be 100,291,20. If all of our revenue sources, all those other, the state aid and those other sources remain the same, that means if the board takes the budget to the max tax cap, we could see an increase in our budget of a little over 2.3 million. So I've spoke a little bit about the revenue. So now I want to speak to you a little bit about the expenditures because that's how we balance the budget. So our current expenditures, you can see that salaries are 54.2%. Benefits make up 27.3% of this year's budget. So that total of 81.5% is a big portion of our budget. The remaining 18.5% is a small portion of that. The 2.4% is our debt. That's a constant number. And then supplies, materials, utility, tuitions, contract services, BOC services, those make up 16.1%. So salaries, currently, we have contracts expiring with three of our associations. And we don't know what the, those settlements are unknown at this time. And again, salaries make up about 15.4% of our budget. As a service-oriented industry, salaries are really in line with being a service-oriented industry. So benefits was the second largest portion of our budget. Three highlights from those benefits are health insurance. Health insurance premiums are increasing for the 2021 school year. The, our premiums are set on a calendar base. So for the 2122 school year, we won't know what that January increase will be. So that'll be six months of our health insurance premiums that are unknown, but walking into this budget. Retirement systems, these, these rates are not finer finalized yet. They are projected to be a slight increase. The retirement contributions, just as a reminder, these are set at the state level. And these are required contributions that this, that's the school must make towards people's retirements. Then the final portion that I'd like to speak about for benefits is social security wages. So the, as employee, as an employer, we meet, match the first 6.2% of social security wages. But that is capped. In 2020, that cap was 137,700. On that is projected to go to raise to 142,800. But I just wanted to note that in 2008, excuse me, 2018, that cap was 132,900. So in two years' time, that cap has increased in close to $10,000. So that's $10,000 more of, of tax that we would be paying on salaries. So our final two budget segments are debt and other categories. So debt is comprised of principal and interest payments. And those were used for different construction projects and other debt that we, our energy performance contracts and things like that. So I just want to remind you from the, that tax cap calculation that these expenses were defined, were taken out of that allowable growth factor and then put back in and then tax cap calculation. So then the other portion of our expenditures are in that other category. That other category, we are expecting that that would be in line with CPI. That's, that our vendors would increase their prices. These are the supplies, utilities, materials and stuff. So generally speaking, that usually falls in line with, with what CPI is. So we are currently working with each building and department to refine those amounts. With that, I think I'm going to turn this back over to Andrew. And he's going to just talk about the overall summary and bring us to the close.
Thanks, Danell, very much. So as Danell's mentioned, there's still a lot of work to be done. But you can see on the summary slide, we think at this point that we'll be able to bring to the board in February, a budget that is within the tax cap. You heard Danell mention the CPI number at the moment. We don't know the final number, but you saw the number is trending lower than it's been in the last couple of years. And that puts a parameter to some degree on the increase that we're able to put to the budget. Not that we necessarily look to increase it, but that tells us what we could increase it if we needed to. And then you also heard that other, other numbers are going up, health insurance going up, retirement systems going up. And though we're in negotiations with all of our units, there are contractually required increases, even if we don't, for example, reach a settlement in some of those contracts. So all of those numbers do have to be considered. But we do think, at, at, at minimum, we think we could come in within the, in the tax cap. And that's where it becomes important for us to hear from the board tonight. So we're indicating to you, we think you can meet your goal as it's written from the beginning of the year. However, if you're feeling differently than you were at the beginning of the year, we would need to hear that now so that we can work a little bit differently from here until that presentation in February. Danell, if we could go to the next slide? Thank you. Here are the things still unknown that you heard about, state aid. We do anticipate, we, it seems like a very good chance that state aid will be reduced, though. Can't be sure with, with some of the changes happening in the country in January and what, what aid packages might become available to the state. That's some of the uncertainty around that as to whether New York State will need to follow through on what it's been saying up to this point, which could be cuts as high as 20% or whether they'll receive additional aid and as a result, perhaps not have to cut aid to schools as much. BOC's expenses remain unknown. The absolute numbers on the retirement systems, we're given ranges to begin with. Those indicate an increase to us, but we're not exactly sure of how much yet. Contractual obligations and the health insurance rate. So all of those things have some unknowns in them, but we also have a sense of the increases to come. If we can just go to the next slide. So looking ahead, as Danell mentioned, we've been meeting already with our departmental leaders around the school, with our school leaders and our department leaders and thinking about all of these kinds of things with them. And, and we've charged them with really being very fiscally responsible, knowing that we have other increases that we'll have to account for. You know, you also saw earlier, and this is often, I think, a surprise to people, how little, how relatively small part of the budget there is that we have discretion over, right? With the vast, with 80-some percent of it going towards salaries and benefits. You know, all of those other things that we do in the schools and the programs that we might want to add and the textbooks we might want to purchase, they all fall within that much smaller segment of the budget. But those are the things that we're talking about as we move forward. And of course, there are, you know, the biggest unknown will be whether we're in the same kind of learning environment next fall as we are now. And that could have a very significant impact on the staffing requests that we might come to the board with for next school year if we're anticipating doubled up classroom spaces in our elementary schools like we have this year. We would want to plan for that if it looks likely. We hope that's not the case with vaccines arriving and other things, but we can't be sure just yet. We can go to the next slide now. Thank you. So our next steps, as we've mentioned a few times, we will come to the board in February. And on that first Thursday, the 25th, and then all day on Saturday, we will go through every single line of the budget. And that's when we talk about what's included in those lines, how they're allocated, what we're anticipating to use them for. And the board will have the opportunity to ask us questions about every single line of the budget that, that is in development now. And then after that, we have additional dates on the calendar as needed, depending on the questions that we get from you on that first Thursday and that first Saturday. We can go back and we can make revisions or we can, you know, answer additional questions as necessary. Looking, we have two possible adoption dates there. You see in March, we're, we're required by New York State to have a final public hearing within a certain timeframe before the actual vote. And that all leads up to the budget vote on May 18th. That date is set by New York State. It's the same for every school district in New York State, May 18th of 2021. We don't yet know what kind of vote that will be in the coming year. But we know that we have our really super staff handled a very unusual budget vote last year. And so we're sure that we can manage a vote under all kinds of circumstances on May 18th of this year. And I think that brings us to the end. So now we're happy to take any questions from the board. And very importantly, to hear from the board, if you have different guidance to us than you often back in the fall, in the early part of the school year.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Danell. I'm not sure whether board members will see things differently tonight than we saw them when we had our earlier conversations around a fiscal goal at the beginning of the year. But I'll just start by saying that it's reassuring to hear you say that even with so much uncertainty, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, that you feel we can meet our goal. Let's just start there and say, thank you. That is good news and that is reassuring. And I think we really appreciate that. Because in addition to the uncertainty on the revenue side and the expenditure side, as you pointed out, there's also uncertainty around the learning environment that we will be working toward for the fall. So again, just amidst so much uncertainty, it's good news to hear that you feel we can come in below the tax cap in layman's terms and that we can meet our goal as, as discussed at the beginning of the year. So that's a great starting point. And I'll open the floor to my board colleagues for other questions or thoughts. Please, Bill, go ahead.
So I'm very much encouraged as well. I don't envy you the decisions that are going to have to be made. It sounds like it's going to be tougher than any of the previous years that I've been on the board. Just in terms of the way things are setting up, you know, I'm not sure if it's a perfect storm, but it's some sort of storm because revenues are down, expenses are up. Uncertainty is higher. And it sounds like, you know, just in sheer numbers, the amount of extra levy you're going to be able, even within the tax cap, is not that much. So, you know, I, I certainly wouldn't change my view that you have to live within the tax cap. I just am acknowledging that it's going to be a lot tougher to do than it might have been in the past. And I think this is where you reap the benefits of previous years being fiscally responsible and flat tax levies. Because in some years like this, you might have to increase it. And you have, you know, sort of the goodwill previously in the community from flat tax. You know, at the same time, another part of this is that the community, you know, people in the community, their personal finances are also affected by all this. So, you know, it's also important to even consider any tax increase over flat, you know, very carefully. So it's going to be a tough, narrow place to try and thread the needle. But certainly, it sounds like, from my, from my point of view, my position hasn't changed in terms of the advice.
Yeah, Julia, please.
So I think the only scenario I would feel differently is if the state came down and said, we're going to have a 25% decrease or a 30% decrease, that relative to the total state aid would eat up almost all of that 2 million. So I think before the administration continued creating a budget that would not exceed the tax cap, I think I would like you to let us know if it, if we are in a position where we actually have to be decreasing the budget from this year. I guess I would really want to have the opportunity to think about and hear from you what you think is available to cut out of the budget. And before you felt the pressure to actually cut it, again, I'm, I am not an advocate for us to ask the community to exceed the tax cap. But if we are in a situation where we would have to do that in order to maintain a certain level of service because of a, you know, I, I'm not sure we aren't going to see a drastic cut in, in the state number. We don't know. And I know we won't know with certainty even at the time that we're creating the budget. But I guess I would want to hear about that before you feel this pressure to absolutely have to restrict our expenditures just outright. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Again, that's my own opinion. So if the board doesn't feel the same, I certainly don't want to influence the situation, but that's my own opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I, I think I concur with both Julia and Bill. Interest rates are lower, state aid is potentially lower, our CPI is lower. It sounded like insurance rates are potentially It sounded like insurance rates are potentially higher. It's quite a concern and, and I, like everybody else, I don't think I'd be in a position to suggest that we change our guidance to the administration. But it definitely is worrisome. And if that state aid number does go down by twenty percent, that really does eat away almost at all of that two point three million. Well, at least one point five of it, I think, by my calculation. That would be a concern in light of increasing expenditures. And so I think we just have to watch this space. I mean, just be a little cautious at the moment, stay the course, but, but it's going to be a tough course to navigate, I think. And like Bill said, I don't envy, I don't envy the challenge, but we'll, I think we're okay for the moment. It's encouraging, but we, we got to watch carefully. Thank you.
Any other comments or feedback? I think it's safe to say for the most part, we're hearing steer the course. And we're not hearing new new guidance or a change of heart from where we were at the beginning of the year. I hope that's helpful. Is there anything more that you'd like from us tonight?
I, I think this was helpful. And I think if there are, you know, certainly if we become aware of anything dramatic, I think what I'm hearing is the board would like to be apprised of that before we do anything dramatic, perhaps to next year's school program. So that seems, that makes sense.
Great. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dino. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, then I think we're ready to move on to our next item, which, as I mentioned, is going to be our public forum. And in a moment, I'm going to ask Kim to help us. We have some comments that were submitted through the Q and A and some comments that came into us through our board email for public forum. And we are going to do our best to listen carefully. We won't be engaging in any back and forth at this time. After the public forum, we're going to move quickly through the consent agenda. And then there will be an opportunity for some additional dialogue or dialogue toward the end of the meeting. So with that, when you're ready, Kim, I'm going to ask you to help us out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marjorie. I'm going to start reading the emails that were submitted to the public forum. Email.
Thank you.
Yep. And the first is Carly Backman. Why is Wednesday still asynchronous learning? I'm not understanding why we cannot have smaller Zoom groups or even one-on-one with the teachers that day so the kids can address any struggles and challenges they are facing. Ideally, Wednesdays become in-person school, but for now I would be happy with some, any type of teacher interaction on Wednesdays. Are there, are any alternate scenarios being considered at all in any way, shape or form? The next email is from Sandy Schasler. I have three kids at Increase Miller this year. Kindergartner, second grader and third grader. On Wednesdays, when all three are home, including my two-year-old, it feels like an endless day of homework assignments. It would be, it would so benefit my oldest, third grade to be able to go in person to school on this day or even for half the day. Even if K two stays remote, which my other two fall into this category, two days of only in-person instruction is very challenging with the curriculum that my third grade is expect, third grader is expected to learn mostly on his own. My father helps him on his three remote days while my husband and I work full-time. He sees the challenges my son is having. He is too young to be home three days with the demands of a rigorous curriculum. He thrives by learning alongside his peers with his teachers in his classroom. I feel like only two days in the building is doing such a disservice to his learning. In my opinion, Wednesdays should be allocated to the other grades that are not given as many days in school. Even if this is on a rotational basis, for example, some grades go half the day on Wednesdays, grades three through seven. The other grades half, go for half a day the following Wednesday, grade seven through twelve. I understand that teachers need the PD day for meetings and such. I'm an elementary teacher myself, but a full day taken away from the kids is too much. I would love if the board would reconsider how Wednesdays are being utilized. Now, the next email is from Sharon Kearney. And I know she has also submitted some comments in the Q and A, so I will try to read them all together. Hello, I'm a parent of a kindergartner at KES. First, let me thank you for all your hard work during this unprecedented school year. I can't even, even fathom all the various challenges you have been faced with. Second, I want to voice my vote in favor of a five-day week for kindergarteners. The start and stop of the school week has been hard on my son and I know he would benefit from more time physically in school. Finally, I am disappointed this school at KES went remote next week without any confirmed COVID cases. We have no idea what's ahead with COVID and when we will have to legitimately shut down. So to have kids and parents shift their expectations, work schedules without due cause is very frustrating. I'm hoping you will reconsider. Now I'm just gonna flip over to her Q and A comments. Why remote next week? This is a real hardship for parents, especially when we are heading into a break, which will likely get extended due to COVID. Has anyone considered how the moral, the morale of the parents might be affecting students' experience? As one of many exhausted, overwhelmed parents, I personally have not thoroughly thought this concept out. But I am curious whether the board has taken that into consideration and what, if any, thought you all might have. Then the next email is from Meredith Black. I understand that this evening's meeting is focused on the budget. With that in mind, I'd like to ask the board, take, ask the board, take a closer look at several line items as you begin to consider the twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two budget. One, with respect to proposed staffing, the twenty twenty one budget noted on page two that there was a proposal for reading RTI staffing of eleven point four. How many staff persons does that equate to? In what capacity are those persons working as a reading teacher, an RTI reading teacher, or, or an RTI math teacher? How are those individuals allocated across the district? What is the proposed staffing for reading and RTI reading teachers in twenty one, twenty two? So the twenty twenty one district budget allocated approximately one million, twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars on line number twenty ten for curriculum development and supervision. How much is being allocated in twenty one, twenty two for curriculum development and supervision? Are any of those funds specifically allocated for reading programs, training? If so, what programs and how much? Three, for the last three years, the district has allocated approximately three hundred thousand under line item fourteen, twenty, four fifty-eight for CSE litigations on page nine of the expenditures report of the budget. Three hundred thousand for a school attorney to litigate claims against parents of children with disabilities. Has the board done an analysis to understand the specific educational issues parents are raising that are resulting in this annual district expense of three hundred thousand? If even a quarter of cases are filed for the same category of concerns, maybe the board should consider looking more closely at this, at that issue to see if there is a better way to proactively address those concerns that are triggering litigation. Instead of fighting with parents, maybe there is a way to create a better program that more appropriately supports students with disabilities. Four, the twenty twenty one district budget allocated approximately one million, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars under the line item twenty-two fifty-four seventy-two-ten to, to, to tuition or other on page eighteen of the, of the budget detailed report. What is the, the allocation for line item twenty-two fifty-four seventy-two-ten for twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year? What are these other schools? How much is being sent to each school annually? Is there a pattern? Can these other schools be grouped in some way that would identify a gap or need which is not being addressed, but could proactively addressed by a change in curriculum teaching or scheduling? Thank you. I look forward to learning more about these budgetary allocations for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So that's all of the emails. And then Meredith Black has a Q and A question or comment. I want to start by thanking those board members, administration and staff that joined the library presentation on science of teaching young children to read on December ninth. I hope that you will continue to educate yourselves on this very important topic. Next Q and A is from Megan Kazensky. Is there any chance of bringing in the elementary children on Wednesdays? When this hybrid model was introduced, it was said that Wednesdays would only be used at the beginning for the teacher training. It is now four months later and our children are still home, essentially missing twenty percent of their education. As districts across the county from Chappaqua to Somers are able to get students K through five in daily, we need to come up with a solution. If not every day, then at least on Wednesdays. When will this happen for our district? How many more weeks will my children have to suffer through the remote-only Wednesdays? Have you looked into strategic ways to fit more children into the school? Perhaps occupying bigger classrooms, art, music, gym, lunchroom as alternative spaces for our children to learn? The next comment is from Jacqueline Keppel. Why are we, why are we remote on Monday and Tuesday next week? It is very hard on working parents who need holy prep time. The next comment is from Douglas Emmerich. Why weren't third grade students included in this survey? What are the next steps for instructional planning based on surveys? And the next comment is from Geraldine Zeickley. There was a lot of discussion that the survey provided clarity on what the people were feeling overall. However, it is important to point out that the way the questions were asked may skew results. For example, the question on Wednesday only allowed parents and students to select Wednesday as asynchronous on Zoom or no opinion. There was no option for in-person Wednesday. By not offering an in-person option as an answer, responses could have been skewed in answering the other questions presented such as about flexibility, for example. People may have been answering the flexibility question based on an asynchronous day where they like the flexibility. But if, if they were asked specifically about the Wednesdays being in person, maybe would have said, yes, I want my child in school on Wednesday. I don't believe the survey got fair answers regarding the Wednesdays based on the way the questions were asked. And the final comment is from Jim Danielwich. I'm a parent of a second grader at Meadow Pond Elementary School and a fifth grader at Increase Miller Elementary. A drawback to using LES this year was related to the conditions of the facilities. Will you consider increasing maintenance of the physical condition of this asset? In the three years we have lived here, I have noticed multiple issues in the condition from an engineering condition perspective. This asset is our, this asset to our district should be maintained in a better condition. And that is all of the comments that I received that have been posted for public forum.
Thank you so much, Kim. We really appreciate your help with public forum. And thank you very much to members of the community for joining us this evening and for sharing thoughts and questions, concerns, and also for sending some of them ahead of time through the email. We really appreciate it. And again, we'll have an opportunity in just a short a couple of moments to enter into some board dialogue. I'm going to close the public forum at this time then and suggest that we move on to the consent agenda. I'm not aware of any items that need to be pulled out of the consent agenda or voted on separately. I'll just pause to make sure that that's correct. And if it is, then could I ask somebody to please move the consent agenda? Thank you, Rory. Seconded by Julia. Thank you very much. And is there any discussion or comment? Okay, then I think we can vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think that was five zero. Do you have what you need for that, Kim? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. And that brings us, as I mentioned, to board dialogue and discussion. I'm just going to start very briefly by mentioning that over the course of the past several meetings, we have gotten a little bit of feedback on how we are facilitating public forums. So we thank you, members of the community, for your patience with us. We do want to mention here at the end of twenty twenty that we are listening. We, we appreciate the feedback. And we are committed to continuing to reflect on how we facilitate public forum to try to do the very best we can, which is to say, we hope to improve on the experience of public forum at some point shortly after the new year. We are working on it. And so thank you for the feedback and for your patience. And it's important to us to ensure that community members feel that they are heard in the manner in which they want to be heard. And we hope to, to improve on the experience. With that said, I'll just mention that I heard some comments tonight. Many comments actually that are just reminiscent of the reality that everybody wants their children back in school in person more than we're able to accommodate right now. I know we heard much more specific feedback than that, and perhaps we're going to talk about that. But so I think that was sort of one category of concern and there were subcategories within. And then we heard other comments tonight about the budget review process. And so just to clarify tonight, in terms of where we are in that process, we are talking about external factors that influence our ability to build a responsible budget and to come in within the tax cap. In February, we'll turn our attention to a very detailed line-by-line analysis of the budget. So thank you for the questions that were asked tonight. And just by way of reassurance, on February twenty-fifth and February twenty-seventh, we will spend a great deal of time proceeding through the budget line by line and asking many questions related to expenditures associated with curriculum instruction. How our staff were allocated from last year's budget into this year's school year, et cetera, looking at budget to actuals and that sort of thing. But I don't, I don't imagine that we were expecting to enter into that conversation tonight. So just to clarify where we are in terms of our process with regard to budget. With all of that, just by way of trying to summarize some of what we heard, I turn it over to the rest of you. Please, I'm going to open the floor for anybody who wanted to respond or had a topic for board dialogue tonight. Thank you. Rory, please.
So just a couple of quick comments. So obviously, again, and we've been hearing about it at many of our past meetings, the subject of Wednesdays came up and normally I'm a strong advocate for more structure on Wednesdays. Although the survey results did sway me a little bit. And I appreciated the comment about the way in which the questions were offered. I know there was nothing intentional there, of course, that it may skew the results. I'm not sure I buy that based on the data that I reviewed, but maybe there is something to that, and I think we just should be wary of it. But even notwithstanding, the number of people in the community on the family survey was almost fifty fifty across the board, across elementary, middle and, and high school for more structure versus, hey, I like it the way, the way it is. And I don't think we should, we should interpret that as we like it the way it is. I think we should interpret that as, well, about half the people like it that way, but there's half, half of the folks out there do not. So I just, I feel like we do need to continue to work through Wednesdays and I know we are. And I know that there's a lot of value in Wednesdays the way they are, but I do think we need to listen to the community and we do need to try to find ways to offer at least some more structure. Some of the requests ranged all the way from, you know, can I just have a little bit of time to connect with my teacher to, you know, I want my you know, can I just have a little bit of time to connect with my teacher to, you know, I want my kid back in class full time. Um, we probably should try to find some happy medium there uh, in the new year. Um, would be my opinion. And then I was quite interested about um, the comment about the condition of LES. I thought that LES was actually in, in good condition. Um, a- and I do believe it is in good condition. In fact, I was in LES and I, I thought it looked in very good condition. So does anybody know where that is coming from? Are we worried about the condition of the Lewisboro facility at all?
If I might just interject briefly before we answer your question directly, just a reminder to the board that in the new year, we will be discussing, we will have a presentation on the five-year building and conditions survey and we'll be joined by Paul Christensen. And so we will actually be receiving very detailed information, not only about LES, but about all of our buildings in the very near future, just as a reminder.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to Paul's presentation. Thanks, yeah.
Uh, in addition to Paul, I believe we'll be joined by our architect or architect at that meeting.
Thank you, Tanelle. I didn't mean to, you know, preclude any other further discussion, but just wanted to share that.
I would, I would guess that the question I, and it is a guess, but I guess that it's coming from the fact that uh, earlier in the year, we we did present a dollar amount to renovate some classrooms there in order, in if we were to house students there this year. So I wonder if that might be prompting the question. So just to clarify on that, the building is in good cond- is in, is in well-maintained condition for its current service, which is, you know, we have, we have offices leased there in certain parts of the building. We have some storage in other parts of the building and the town is uh, leasing the gym. And certainly all of those parts are, are maintained well. It's not an open school at the moment, and so it's not maintained in the way that an open and functioning school is maintained. And that's why there would be additional cost if we were to bring students back in. Uh, but certainly the building is not um, falling apart uh, or in any way um, declining in terms of its uh, safety as a structure or anything like that.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Sure.
I guess I'd like to maybe make just sort of a s- more summary level comment, um, which is, I think everyone is experiencing this situation in different ways. And I think for all of us, it has multiple stressors. It's stressful on you know, families who have had job changes, financial changes. You know, whether your children who are at home are younger or older, you have college kids who may be home, who are having a very different college experience. It's a very challenging experience for everyone. And I think as board members since March, we've had very regular dialogue with Andrew and um, you know, through him, other members of the administration to understand the tremendous challenges that they have faced this entire year and just in terms of creating the classrooms, figuring out how to split kids into groups, bring more people in and you know, in the early stages when we talked about how we would do this, we all had the goal of having as many kids in school as possible and it, it just wasn't feasible. And I'm happy that over the course of the last four months, we have been able to bring in an additional grade. Um, but that did require us to give up large spaces in our elementary schools, our, our cafeterias and our gyms. Um, and it also requires staffing because those kids are not all in the same classroom together. And so there's a lot of financial considerations unfortunately that we were again, or you know, we're up against them and we're getting potentially less money from the state because of the overall just sort of crippling financial situation that the pandemic presents. And so I guess I feel like all of us have things that aren't how we want them. And that's true of everyone, the adults, the kids, it's, you know, we're about to go into the holidays where most of us may not see our families in the way that we're accustomed to, you know, the Jewish holidays have been different, you know, remote high holidays. So I guess I just, um, I hope that the community can be reassured that I, as a board member, I a- and someone who, you know, I think as board members, we have more frequent interaction with the administration. I trust explicitly that their goal is to continue to try to improve the educational experience of our students and do everything they can to continue to make it better throughout this crisis. But there's no ideal outcome right now. It's just challenging. And so um, you know, I just, I hope that um, everyone can feel confident in that and it may not happen at the pace that we would like, um, or even be the outcome that we expect or want. Um, but I really do think that everyone is doing the best that they can in an incredibly challenging situation. So coming into the holiday and the new year, and this is our last meeting before that, I just, I want to thank you. Um, I don't in any way want to um, like take away from how hard this experience is for everyone and their own experiences. And, and so we want you to give us that feedback because it helps inform everyone. But in that feedback, just please know that, that we're fortunate to have teachers and professional staff and you know, bus drivers and custodians and teaching assistants who are really trying to do the best for our kids. And it's just a really, really hard time. So I think, you know, overall, I think we're, we're doing a really good job and I'm just really appreciative of where we are.
Thank you, Julia. Yes, Bill.
There are a couple of questions about why schools are closed next week. And I know that, that, you know, like most things, there's a pro and a con and there's two sides to it. I was wondering, Andrew, if it would, it would be worth sort of laying, because to me, it sounded like a perfectly rational reason.
Thank you, Bill. Happy to, happy to address that one. And again, not a, not an easy decision and not necessarily one we wanted to make. Um, and definitely pros and cons to it. We know that some districts around us actually closed or went remote even earlier. At the beginning of this current week. Uh, and some districts decided to do the same more recently, just for next week. Some districts also just had calendars that happened to be built this year where the next two weeks were vacation periods to begin with. So didn't necessarily have the same factor, but the thinking was really around the COVID cases that we continue to find out about in our schools on a pretty regular basis, which the community I hope is aware of from the almost nightly emails that come home detailing the number of cases on each given day. And then the lag time that we experience when we find out about those cases. When the uh, if it was students or staff, when they were actually in school. And then the lag time between that and when we're able to reach out to all those people who will now need to quarantine. Uh, and so the thinking was with the holidays beginning, if we had students in school on Monday and Tuesday, we think there's a very, very high chance that come Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we would be calling large numbers of families as we have been doing for the last several months to say, we have to let you know you were in contact on Monday or Tuesday with somebody in school who was positive and as a result, you need to quarantine for the next however many days. And now, however, we'd be calling them, they weren't here in school. They perhaps have traveled or they've gone to be with family or friends for the holidays. And now they've been exposed to a lot more people before we've even had a chance to uh, let them know that they were exposed to a positive individual here in the school. So it was really, that was the thinking. It's, a- as with everything else, there's some unknown around it. It's certainly possible. We could have gone through two days next week without any positive cases in school. We anticipated also that a lot of families would choose to stay home, would choose to keep their children home to be in the end of next week for that very reason. That's the pattern that we've been seeing of late. So that's, that was the primary uh, thinking that drove it. Um, and knowing that we could then provide remote instruction on those two days uh, in place of the in-person instruction.
Marjorie, I'd like to make a couple of comments and based on what Andrew just said as well. You know, a lot of time has passed, right? Since March, the shutdown. So when the pandemic started and even now, based on what Andrew was just talking about and what several was just talking about, I think it's worth reminding everyone that the way you beat or at least deal with a pandemic is through mask wearing, it's through social distancing and it's through minimizing the population density, which is why so much work went into adjusting the physicality of the schools and the hybrid model and so forth. Right? And I just think it's worth kind of saying out loud, the pandemic is not over. It's not even close to over. And it's actually worse, a lot worse now than it was when it started. I mean, there were, yesterday, there were almost a quarter of a million infections in the United States alone. And over 3,600 people died from COVID yesterday alone. So as exhausted as we are and, and I am exhausted, we're all exhausted, our kids are exhausted. I get it. I completely empathize with that feeling. But I think it's worth reiterating that, you know, this is a global health crisis that is far from over. And so we have to continue to remain vigilant. And I firmly, you know, believe and have been proven over and over again that Andrew and the district are making decisions in the best interests of our public health and the health and safety of our students, of our faculty and staff and of our entire community. And that is paramount. And so I think that leads to difficult and challenging situations on a day-to-day basis. No, no question, right? I mean, it's hard. I mean, even you know, let's just say, uh, Andrew made the call and we read the email in my own household this evening about uh, closing for the snow day. And even in my own household, let's just say there is some discussion and disagreement about whether or not there should be a snow day. Okay. And I think that's a completely fair and, and logical conversation to have. Uh, but be that as it may, you know, decisions are made about health and safety for our district. You know, the conversation around bringing students back on Wednesdays, I agree Wednesday should be tweaked. And I again, am confident that the district is keeping a very firm eye on this and will make just adjustments according to data and according to information that is in the best interest of the greater good for the entire district. Uh, the remote days are hard, you know, extra days with the children uh, studying at home and learning at home is hard. But given what we know about the pandemic and the fact that you challenge and ultimately defeat a pandemic through population density, when we're asking for, and folks are asking for more days, which equals more contact, which equals more exposure, more risk, more infections, more quarantining. Every time there's an infection, there is some quarantining. That means faculty and staff have to be kept home. Which leads actually to a greater chance of shutting down, which will actually lead to even less face-to-face contact if we're not careful. So in my estimation, the hybrid model is actually you know, as, as imperfect as it is, we all want our students back to five days a week. Of course we do. But given the totality of this situation, we have to try to thread the needle and find a balance where the students can learn and folks can teach and we can remain healthy. And I think the district has done a really remarkable job of that so far. Districts around us are going back. They started hybrid and/or fully in person and they're going online. So if you look around on the news, that's happening. So I feel incredibly fortunate that we have not had to have a major shutdown and that is not by accident. That is not luck. That is through very, very adept strategic management. So the last question I, I have, or the last comment I have to make is, you know, one of the, the public forum comments said that uh, our students are losing, we're missing 20% of their education because they're asynchronous on Wednesday. And I have some serious concerns about statements like that. You know, my rhetorical question in response to that comment is would a district like ours that ranks so high and performs so well statistically in Westchester, in New York State and nationally, would it, would a district like ours that is managed by an administration like ours really allow our students to lose 20% of their education? And it's a rhetorical question for a reason. Because the answer, I think, is an undoubtable no. They would not allow that to happen. So I just have a very hard time with those types of comments being made without any type of data substantiation or corroboration because it's dangerous, because it ends up casting this aspersion upon a district that is doing no such thing by, you know, allowing our students to miss 20% of the education. I am happy to be disabused of that notion if that is actually the case, but I don't think it is. So I'm gonna stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, Terrence. Are there any other comments or topics? Thank you, everybody, for that discussion. Thank you to our community members for participating in public forum and thank you to everybody at the table here tonight and especially to our administrators for all that you've done to enable students who needed to learn from home entirely to be able to do that. You know, we have a um, sizable number of students who have learned remotely and only remotely the entirety of the year. And then on the other end of the spectrum, you know, thank you for all that's happened, especially in recent weeks to be able to create space for additional groups of students to come back four days a week. And then everything in between, you know, for our cohort A and cohort B, who are in two days a week, et cetera. There really was a pretty long period of time expanding or s- extending, I should say, from the spring through the summer where and I don't think I was alone in this, but where I, I really wasn't sure students and teachers were coming back to school in person at all. Or if they were, you know, I guess I thought maybe we would make it, I think, I think I said, you know, three weeks, I'll take three weeks just for kids to meet their teachers in person, for those who can come in person. And then it was like five weeks and, you know, just sort of kept keeping the hope alive. And here we are at the end of December and for the most part, you know, our schools have remained open and our students are learning and, you know, I think we can all agree it's imperfect, yes, but I do just want to take a minute to express our gratitude on behalf of the board to, again, everyone here at the table and also to members of the community, those who are with us here tonight, which is just a tiny fraction of the larger community for your partnership, because this is an unprecedented time. It is enormously challenging. But um, I do feel very proud of our district, of, of our community for the manner in which we've made it this far during this school year. And looking forward to coming back in the new year. I hope everybody has a terrific holiday season and a wonderful winter break. And a very happy new year and best wishes for health and happiness in the new year. Um, and I just thought that we would be remiss if we didn't pause here at the end of board dialogue to just share that sentiment. So thank you so very, very much. I think that brings us to future meetings. And if you can just bear with me for a minute, I have to just pull them up here. Let's see. Future meetings. The board will next meet in the new year on Thursday, January 14th at 7:30. And then there will be a sustainability subcommittee meeting that next morning at 8:15 a.m. Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, January 19th at 7 p.m. Policy will meet Friday, January 22nd at 9 a.m. And then the board meets again Thursday, January 28th, 7:30 p.m. And uh, finance, no, policy, pardon me, meeting on Friday, January 29th at, at 9 a.m. Did I miss anything? No, okay. Then that brings us to 17.01. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Moved.
Moved by Julia. Thank you. Seconded by Bill. Thank you so much. Happy new year, everybody. We can vote on our motion to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you so much. Good night. Be safe.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, Karen. Take care.